Hey Jeff, did you happen to see the article on NPR about measuring student success through absenteeism? Just like measuring absenteeism.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's funny.
And that's different states. There's like 26 states now that are using that as a measure. So it's a good article.
We're using a measure that's tighter than the Massachusetts measure. So there's something called attendance counts. It's a research-based organization. And that's the system I'm accustomed to what we're using. It's 10 percent. If you're absent 10 percent, I mean 5 percent, if you're not here 95 percent of the time, that's chronic truancy. So that's 10 days a year. It seems like a tiny little bit.
Yep.
But if you're not here for 10 days during the year, you're missing out on quite a bit. And if the teacher's not here, it can get just compounded over and over. I was just thinking. We're starting to measure it that way to see what we get. We get some attendance difficulties through the system that we're kind of sensitive to. We're starting to track that.
I thought it was a cool article.
Yeah. Hi Emily.
Hi. They had to see where I was sitting.
Good to see you're happy as a plant.
Emily?
I'm sorry?
You're up in bat if you want to call your meeting.
Yes. Sorry. No? Hmm, it's fine. It is 5:15 and so I call to order the Human Resources Subcommittee of the Penn State Regional School District, School Committee. Our first item is the administrator's opportunity to attend PRSD. And Dr. Mulqueen, I'm assuming that's you?
No, it's not mine. It's actually Mr. Buell.
Mr. Buell. Fantastic.
Well, I hope so. Since we have included administrators in the retirement plan for the district, I don't know if an administrator would really want to take advantage of this, but imagine we have an administrator who's considering working here, but there's a commuting issue or whatever. I think this is a great opportunity to have something in place to attract younger administrators.
I think that's-
And it would be subject to the same, I guess, guidelines as for teachers' children coming into the district, if there is a C.
Right, so if there is a C.
Yeah.
And then this, the administrator's child would go into the same pool with the teacher's children?
I would imagine yes.
Would imagine?
I mean, we can frame it any, but I think that would be the most fair.
Yeah, that sounds like, I think that's a great idea.
Once a year.
Right. Maybe not. So what do-
I would ask for a motion from this subcommittee to move it to the regular committee for a vote.
Okay. So you're making a motion? And I'll second it?
Thank you.
You will? Okay. All in favor? He's voting.
Get that fifth Groveland vote.
Passes unanimously.
So Jeff, does that mean it goes to the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. That is our only item? So motion? Do we need to move to adjourn? Yes?
Motion.
Second. The Human Resources Subcommittee meeting is adjourned at 5:17 PM. Thank you.
Well, it's 5:18. The next one's supposed to start at 5:30.
I'm gonna have a cookie.
Hold on wait.
Did you shrink your husband?
Oh, good.
I know, right? It's really funny. He's a clone.
The regional school district, we page the subcommittee meeting. I'm officially calling it over. Our one item tonight is Dr. Mulqueen is going to update us on Thought Exchange and what is happening there.
Right. And I was going to have more information for you, but things have switched up a little bit. So we had a working group meeting for the school building project. And after talking through it with our project manager and with the design company, Doran Whittier, we're going to delay it until November 13th to 25th because it will fit with the visioning sessions that are being planned for that time period. And Doran Whittier thinks that it will lend to what they're doing, you know, right in the right timeframe. So the questions are still going to be around configuration and we'll be presenting that in the last round, there was a preponderance of people who were in favor of a 7 through 12 configuration. And we'll be asking for more information about what that means to people, what opportunities do they think is in a 7 through 12 configuration that they'd like to see for kids. And there'll also be a little bit more weightiness to the Thought Exchange in asking them to actually kind of register their sentiment about one way or the other. So Doran Whittier thinks that will dovetail nicely with their visioning sessions. They have pre-visioning sessions coming up in November. And we'll be putting out a general release to invite the public, teachers, parents, you know, community members, everybody, to join in and talk through the visioning session. And I think it will be helpful for those who participate and also for those who hear about the results, to see that the educational programming really is the driving force behind the building project. It's not about determining a cost and fitting the building to a cost. It's not about any other thing. It's about what's your educational programming, what are your intended outcomes, and then how do you best meet those with the facility that is going to serve you today and into the future. So I think all that will come together nicely. It's been a real benefit to have Doran Whittier and our project manager to help. It's sort of like, I think we are on a good pathway forward, but it just is a lot richer conversation now, a lot better, because they have the experience and they're able to say, well, this is what's coming and here's the timeline and this will fit better over here. So, you know, I think we're good there. I've been in touch with the Thought Exchange consultants and they have a new product component out that allows for an introductory video. So I have some students who are filming the video to welcome whoever is going to participate and to thank them for contributing to our school building project. And, you know, I think that will also help, you know, with our public relations a little bit. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions, but, you know, I had a different point of view when we scheduled this, that I was going to be talking about, you know, how we were moving forward and here's the timeline. And now it's been delayed about a month, November 13th to about the 25th. So I'll go back with Thought Exchange and redo a little bit of that work and we'll be back on track.
Yeah, this is just an example of how we're now integrating with the rest of the project. So that's why some of the timelines are getting shifted around a little bit.
So I got a meeting with the towns. It sounds like now that's going to be pushed out until like November or December? Or is that even going to take place? What's that going to look like?
What's happening there is Doran Whittier, we revised the presentation that you're flying. So it speaks more to what's happening immediately and we don't go too far afield, particularly to avoid getting into anything that might cause speculation, because, I mean, that's just guesswork at this point in the process. So at our, so they have the revised presentation. They were going to pretty it up because they have corporate resources to do that. And then we were going to talk about the timing at the next working group meeting, which is the day after tomorrow. And the goal is going to be, if possible, we'd like to do presentations to all three towns at the same night, their selectmen meetings. You know, start at the beginning of one, the middle of another, get to the end, and maybe, you know, while we're, we can see if that could work. If not, you know, we may have to do it over a course of two nights, but we're trying to make all three towns, you know, feel like they're on an equal footing here, so we're going to see if we can make that happen. And the other thing is there's going to be a team doing it that includes us as well as members of the administration, as well as members of Doran Whittier and Vertec. So it'll be a kind of a holistic crew doing the presentation.
We're like thinking about mid-October, maybe the 16th or so, potentially?
Yeah, I think they're of a mind like we were, like, we need to get out there soon because the new school year has started and a lot of people are just wondering what's going on. So it's going to happen soon. We'll be able to determine that on Thursday.
Okay. And the meeting on Thursday, is that the Building Committee meeting?
It's the working groups. That's a subset of people from the Building Committee.
Okay.
That's sort of like the SWAT team that gets stuff done, who we meet every Thursday morning. Yes, sir.
Is the visioning sessions, are they happening before the town meetings or after the town meetings? Which is coming first? I thought I heard someone say three visioning sessions.
In November or so? Yeah. Okay. The invitation will be coming out soon. So you can count on November as some potential times for us to get together. The times of the meetings will be about the 3 or 4 till about 7 or 8. They're fairly long meetings that we have scheduled and they'll be right here in the cafeteria. So we're organizing, you know, what those meetings will be like and the supports that we need to have for them, food and maybe some childcare, that sort of thing. So it's still a little early, but that invitation will be coming out soon.
And how are the architects going to be in all three different towns? You were talking about all three towns simultaneously making a presentation.
We're going to try to do it literally, do a present, because the deck will only take 10 minutes or so to go through and then maybe 10, 15 minutes, and if we do another 10, 15 minutes.
So they're going to be skipping from community to-
And then it's hopping a car, get over to the next meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
And we may, we may need to ask somebody potentially to push their meeting back for a little bit, make that happen. Or if we can't do that, you know, one town will likely have to get their presentation on one day. Any more questions? All right, then let's adjourn the Communications Subcommittee.
Do you remember when Merrimack came in here?
I think it was September.
I was surprised. When did the one of town meetings first-
Next up.
Merrimack is the only one that's by law.
What's that?
Merrimack is the only, you talked about the fall town meetings?
Yeah.
Merrimack is the only one that has a-
Fantastic.
Mr. Murphy? Can you get started?
Oh, you can go ahead, Wayne, since you-
All right. I'd like to call to order the Policy Subcommittee meeting. We have a few agenda items. First, the members, Lisa O'Connor, Chris Redding isn't here at this point, and Dick Hodges. I guess Greg, this would be you for number two, E and D?
Yeah, I realize as I was beginning the budget process for fiscal year '19, yeah, it's already started, that we created the OPEB trust fund a few meetings back. We created that fund we needed. We didn't have a mechanism to fund it. We assumed it would come from E and D, but we already had the E and D policy. So I just wanted to amend the E and D policy to allow, basically saying, instead of putting it into stabilization fund, now it can say the stabilization and/or the district's other post-employment benefits liability trust fund in amounts determined during the budget process, the budget approval process. So in other words, before we took our E and D, whatever it was, and had a line in the budget for transfer to stabilization, now there'll be a transfer to stabilization, transfer to OPEB trust, and we'll determine of that E and D fund, how much goes in each box during the budget process. And I have to add an S at the end of a budget approval process because I crossed off the line and took out the S. But I just wanted that mechanism and then to fund it and that be the policy to do it. So I wanted to amend that policy.
Dick, Lisa, any comments?
No.
I guess we're all set then.
Goes to the next business meeting.
This will be brought to the full committee for a vote, to make that change.
Thank you.
All right. The language policy. I imagine Dr. Mulqueen, you'll address this?
Yep, sure. So primarily, this policy recommendation came out of our IB application for the Merrimack schools. But it is also a good idea for us to have this beyond that. What you'll see is that we've addressed second language learners here generally, and we've included some components for our IB school more particularly to meet the needs that the IB folks have in that application process. So we've really talked about the value and importance of language generally, how we need to support all language learners, including second language learners. You'll see that I included the most recent licensing requirements for teachers on the first page. That's been quite a controversial and confusing issue over the past couple of years. And even as close as last summer, they had some other revisions. So these are the latest and greatest revisions that we have. We may have to update it eventually, you know, if they were to change it once again. You'll see that I've included some of our programming here, talking about German as a second language taught in our elementary schools. And as you know, eventually, we'd like to include Spanish as well, to expand it. But for right now, we have German in our elementary schools and the goal would be to incorporate other languages as we go forward. So what I'm seeking is your recommendation to the full committee for the language policy so that we can move forward with it.
Can I just ask, what was the, what was the idea of teaching German before Spanish? Because I've had people ask me and I didn't realize they were teaching German in elementary schools.
Yeah, it's a good question. So we had hoped to have both a Spanish and German certified teacher. And what we came up with was a native speaker German teacher, which was great, but we couldn't find somebody who was duly certified. So language teachers are scarce resource, scarce commodity. And I'm confident that as we move forward, we'll be able to get an elementary Spanish teacher and just bring the two together. Yeah. Well, you're right on point. You know, we had a gentleman actually from the Boston area who didn't have a car and we were trying to strategize in the summer, how we could get transportation for him up to Newburyport on the train, and then how would we get him from Newburyport down to school? You know, we tried every which way, but eventually we got a really great teacher, native speaking German teacher. And as we go forward, we'll try to incorporate Spanish.
Dr. Mulqueen, I've got a question.
Yes.
On the draft itself, third, such and such support for language learners?
Yes.
In that sub-paragraph, it seems contradictory, maybe, maybe I'm confusing something. The first sentence, which I didn't think was correct, "There is no regulatory mandate requiring all educators to possess an SEI." Then the very last sentence will say, "The license status will indeed be restricted," meaning the educator will be unable to renew, advance, or extend if they don't have it. So it sounds like if you don't, from that, you can remain a teacher until you have to renew in five years, and if you don't have it by then. That first sentence that says, "No regulatory mandate." I thought there is a regulatory mandate. That's what the last sentence is telling us.
Huh. So the key word there is "all." There's no regulatory mandate for all educators. And that sentence is particularly important, so you're very keen to point that out. And that's what I believe the State Department's relying on when they continue to waffle back and forth on who is and who isn't able to get certification. So because of all the waffling, I included exactly the language that they have been using, so that later we can come back to it if we need to, to justify, you know, some of the outcomes. So right now, we have kept a list over the course of the past three years when this mandate came through, and we're pretty confident that everybody who should be certified is certified. And we're helping teachers to better understand that they need to proceed at their own cost now. It used to be free, and then once our window was over, it's no longer free classes for them. It's quite pricey. So I thought it would be best to just include the language that the State Department is using. And that's, I think what you pointed out is what they're relying on when they have to make a decision that doesn't seem just exactly on target.
I know there are a lot of educators who are extremely concerned they have to get 60 and their 120, and this, to get their license renewed in five years.
And it is only core educators, so art teachers, PE teachers, music teachers are not core.
Talking just about.
Math, language arts, social stuff. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So you're exactly right. Good point.
Do you have any more comments on the language policy? Well, I guess we can move on. Number four, family engagement policy. Would you like to address this?
I would. Our Title I requirements include having a district family engagement policy. And I'd like to be able to take credit for writing this, but I can't. It's really governed by the regulations. And Rob Harrison, before he left, just went through the regulations and crafted it. And so, you know, it meets exactly what they require and nothing more.
Hoping everybody had a chance to go over this and read through it. Those are dead. Is there any comments, Lisa?
The RAND Corporation for decades has evaluated Title I, and I'm not opposed to Title I, but their research shows that Title I students that are in these programs do not seem to go up, do not seem to go down. They have flatlined after billions of dollars. So I'm just throwing out that information. That's some research that I've done. But the RAND Corporation has been evaluating them for probably two decades anyways, possibly three.
Yeah.
I guess I just want to have some clarity on the Title I program yet. So how often, it's like every September, January, and June, like how often are kids evaluated?
They follow the same evaluation cycle that all of our students do. And the difference is that the Title I programming requires us to use that information to show to what degree did the student population increase or decrease in their performance. So they use exactly the same evaluation tools that we use, DIBELS, FNT, state assessments. So they'll be using the new reading and math assessments that we're putting into play. They use exactly the same that everybody uses.
So if a student is evaluated, say at the beginning of the school year, and they're not doing well, how long is it until they're running the program, Title I?
Well, it would be similar to any other student. If there's a trend for them to be, you know, if a teacher feels as though they're not trending in the right direction, they go to the student support team for some conversation, and then eventually they would come into some additional support, supplemental supports.
Okay.
Yeah. So I can't tell you like there's a timeline that's involved.
Okay, so I mean, so the RAND meetings, it isn't like, you know, we tested the child in September, they didn't do good, now we're going to wait and see if they improve in January, not do anything during that?
No, we monitor them.
Well, and usually it depends on how many students aren't making benchmark and how many, how much Title I funding there is, like for a staff, you know, because if you only have Title I funding for one staff member, like, and even if you had 10 kids below benchmark, they can't service all those people. So I think that that's usually a piece of it as well.
Yeah, and we're using our title money to provide adequate supports, adequate positions to meet our needs, so we don't run into the situation of not having enough.
Are there any more comments from anybody else?
So once again, I'm looking for you to recommend this to the full committee for approval and the business meeting.
So I'd make a motion to bring it forward to the school committee for, full school committee for a vote.
Second.
Okay, all votes. Lisa, Emily. All right.
Full committee.
Now I need one of you two, Lisa, that's motion for adjournment. Let's move.
I know, me too. Second. Your adjourn. The Penn State Regional School District Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Subcommittee meeting at 5:52. And the first agenda item is later start times. Who?
So this was the result of an email Dr. Mulqueen received from a woman who thought that it might be a good idea for the school committee to take a look at the start times, citing various studies about sleep in children and how they impact each other. And I think Dr. Mulqueen's got some interesting points on this regarding synchronizing with other schools and how kids are sort of different, going from kid to kid.
So one of the things that has come up over the years is about the research that has to do with the shift that occurs in teenagers. Their biology shifts around them. And for many teenagers, they have a shift in their sleep patterns. So they tend to go to sleep later and have to sleep at a different time than they're used to or that were used to. And so that, over the course of many years, has brought to the table, well, why not shift the school day to have a later start so that everything is an hour or so, you know, offset? So what occurs when that proposition comes up is the coordination with other schools, other secondary schools in particular. And the coordination typically has to do with sports teams and how you run sports teams. So you belong to a league, and if you're the only district that does it, or if there are only a couple of the two of it, then it can potentially cause a wrinkle and all that. Another would be that to change the secondary times, it's pretty typical that you also have to change the elementary times. So you flip-flop elementary with secondary start times. And communities that go through that find that it's not always an easy conversation to have in starting elementary school a lot earlier, when you flip-flop. So that all being said, what I think is really, you know, the point here-
You can come on in. Those people wait.
Hi there. What I think sometimes is lost in the conversation or in the argument is not which one you choose, but that different people have different biological rhythms that go on. And in talking with students here, while some would agree that some people would like to have a different start time, other people are happy with what they have, or other people like to be early voters. So it's hard to manage one time to suit everybody. And our approach has been to try to- And our approach has been to try to individualize where a student who would like to take early, sort of like college, a student who would like to take earlier classes would have that opportunity. A student who would like to take later in the day classes would have that opportunity. But that it would provide more individual differences rather than shifting from one system for everybody to another system for everybody.
Have other schools done that, where they get a choice?
Where they have choice or where they shift?
Well, a choice and if they want to go to school earlier or later.
Well, we do that. So to a large degree, our students are able to say, do I have an earlier class or a later class? And we would make that accommodation for them.
Okay.
We also have summer classes. We call it summer semester classes.
I have a very definite opinion in this subject area. I dealt with 15 and 18-year-olds for 36 years. And looking at attendance throughout the entire high school level, I don't believe you have a lot of research. Some parents look at one, states the biorhythms, et cetera. High school kids get extremely honest with their people that run clubs, sports, activities they talk around, et cetera. The absences and the tardies weren't from anything more, in most cases. Wanting to stay up later, social reasons, et cetera. And skipping breakfast is a big one, so they can go up to the dorms and just don't say it, then come in tardy after the dawn. The schools that have had, raised it 45 minutes, the same typical thing that American teenager northeast, they go through, it would continue that fashion. So even with sports aside, and that's absolutely correct, it would really, really raise havoc with sports. Went up to throw about another hour and a half, would have to have everybody in the league, and in some cases, later on, other leagues, all be on the same time schedule, of which now, parents would have to deal with another set of adverse circumstances to make it fit their schedules. The bottom line is, for everyone that says his biorhythms, there's another researcher that is well-educated as well, that starts, no, the start time of 7:30, raising it to 8, or to 8:30. And I am, I don't know anything about elementary school. I don't know anything about the little guys. And I would think parents would have more control on when they get up, when they put them to bed, and not let them go to their rooms with a cellphone to talk to their buddies all night. So I don't know whether earlier or later would have a positive or an adverse effect. But I do believe I have the handle on the 15 to 18-year-old crowd. These are more than happy to admit it away from somebody taking a poll, or somebody in a position that they thought would affect them adversely. That's the way teenagers are. It's not a bad thing. It's just a normal growth and development thing.
So the question that I have for you, Jeff, then, is that if a student is, and I would imagine a good majority of our students are taking a full academic course load, there really wouldn't be that flexibility to miss the first period or to put it later in the day or something. You know, like I look at my daughter, who's a junior. She has academic periods every single day, like college prep stuff. So how would you see that flexibility?
Yeah, we offer multiple classes. So you can take your English class, like, there are some singletons, but there are multiples of many classes, and you can arrange your day to take a multiple.
Right, but my point is that she has academic subjects every single period.
Seven?
Well, she does band, but to me, band is not non-academic. And that's later in the day, so that wouldn't free up any time for her.
Yeah. So I would say on an individual basis, you'd have to go in and talk with the guidance department and figure out. But we're open to doing that. We're open to figuring something out that would make sense for an individual student, rather than saying, this is the way it has to be for everybody.
I mean, I agree that, I agree that there's probably half the students would benefit from later start, half wouldn't. So to change it for everybody, I do agree with that. But I think that looking, I think what you're saying is too simple for the students who are going on to college and need to get all the AP courses. I mean, some AP courses are first period and it's two periods. And, you know, there's things like that that I think would prohibit students from being able to move back their classes.
So I'm not saying that we absolutely can make adjustments for every student. I'm saying that our philosophy is to make adjustments as we can and that we'll always look to do that. There are, some schools aren't open to do that.
Jeff, as a former teacher, I think, you know, to maybe address that, there are five core subjects. And if your daughter is in those five core subjects, say, history. History might be offered in the morning, sometime early afternoon, et cetera. So same course is offered, not all seven courses, but is your daughter taking?
Well, so it's, it's, it's when you look into junior, senior year, when you're trying to fit the AP courses in, there isn't as much of a selection for those AP courses. So they are when they are.
Well, it depends on the number of sections. I taught AP history here for 17 years. We had two sections. And one was always in the morning and one was always in the afternoon.
And I think there are probably some are like that, but I think there's other ones that aren't as populated that there's no choice in that.
That could be. And we also offer a summer semester now. And I don't know if that was here when you were there.
It was not.
And so if there's a group of students who'd like to take a course during the summer, we can try to provide it then too, so they don't have to take it during the course of the regular year. So we're trying to offer lots more flexibility in our scheduling.
And yeah, I'd like to close by endorsing what Wayne was saying. This is not a solo decision of one school district.
Yeah.
Because the number of things banned does inter-school concerts and things, and sometimes inter-school practices. All of those things have to be coordinated. And your kids are getting out half an hour later, it does throw a wrench into the schedule.
So if you had a student and you could arrange for like a first period essentially study hall every day, they could come to school one period later and not be counted as tardy, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, so it may mean that there could be a course that they then, I guess, couldn't take if it was offered first period, but if it was really a hindrance for them.
And again, to address Chris's AP, they, and I don't want to get hunted by guidance for this, but if you have, say, 15 people taking AP chemistry senior year, and they all say they would like to come in at second period, that may be a scheduling situation that you could complement. So there are ways to adapt to that.
I like the flexibility, but the research that I've done, and I've spent quite a bit of time as a high school English teacher, the kids that are chronically tardy are chronically tardy no matter what time school starts. In fact, we had a youngster at Hamilton-Wentham that every time there was a game on Tuesdays and Fridays, he came in at 11 o'clock. We had to set up a new rule that anyone that comes in after nine, you don't play. So it would absolutely devastate. And by 7 o'clock right now, my wife's a field hockey official, it's dark. So unless you have light, a lighted field, and unless the entire league goes along with this, I would say the flexibility that you talked about, when it works, it works, and when it doesn't work, we'll see you at 7:30. The flipping, I've had four elementary school sons, and I certainly would not be in favor of flipping. And there's also the real world. I know of no workplace that says, you want to come in a little late and work a little. The boss says, you're in at 6, you're in at 7, or you don't have the job.
Well, I absolutely agree with Christine Brennan that it's not going to work for everybody. It isn't, particularly some of the upper echelon people that are going to have every single period, because you're not going to have flexibility if you take an AP chemistry and three other AP courses. They are what they are, some of them are singletons. True, however, bottom line, it goes back to, yeah, I feel bad for those persons, but my experience, those persons are a little more mature, they're a little more dedicated in their studies, and they, for the most part, can handle that and are not affected by this early 7:30 start, except in the old days, where I was, there was eight classes. The best students, we took the top 20, they skipped lunch, and they were getting the okay to have lunch in classrooms and take eight classes so they could have nothing but those singletons. And they're resilient, they can do it. And I don't believe that 7:30 start, moving it up is going to be helpful to very small groups. I agree, one of Mr. Hodges, that those who are going to stay up until 2, 11, or 12, or whatever, get there at 6 hours' sleep, they'll eat in the noon time, and then they'll be ready to go after school. I think parents should jump in on that.
One thing that wasn't brought up was transportation, you know, what that would look like if the kids were on their own, if they decide to do this. I can speak from experience that when I went to high school, my freshman and sophomore year, I started my regular high school at 10 o'clock in the morning. And there was a population of students that started high school at 10:00, and we had a bus pick us up. And then when high school let out, we all got on a bus and went to a technical high school, for a technical school. So essentially, I went to two high schools for two years. It wasn't something that I enjoyed doing. And I know that our students would be not be going to school till 5 o'clock at night, but that was something that I had done. But I had a hard time adjusting to starting school later in the morning, where there was already a population that was here, they had already gotten into the swing of things, and it was kind of difficult to integrate in. So a student's going to be responsible for transportation, or what does that look like?
Yeah, so a student would be responsible for transportation if they cannot follow the schedule.
I think it sounds like a good idea, but I don't think, I, you know, for some people, but I don't think logistically it's, it works for everybody, and sports specifically, and after school, and, I mean, all the research, you know, that shows that it is good for the students. I think that the other, the other component is that kids are just habitually late and they're not going to show up on time anyway.
Well, the core of this issue is sleep.
Right.
And school start time is one component of sleep. When you go to bed, it's probably an even more important component of sleep.
Yes.
So.
And the parents need to set the clocks as to when the kids, you know.
Right, you can have your kids stay up till 2.
It used to be when the lights are out, you're inside. My parents told me every night, wait up, I was in bed by 9 o'clock and I was a high school senior.
So, yeah, I mean, my point is, the school is not the dominating factor here in terms of sleep. And, you know, my senior in high school, he pretty much works until he goes to bed. So if you start later, he's just working later and going to bed later. So I don't know that this is an issue we should pursue at this time. But I don't want to, I don't want to overrule your authority here, Dana, so.
So do I make, do you want to make a motion, or, I mean, or do we make a motion?
You don't make motions. I don't.
Or, probably has to be someone on the committee.
Is this an open meeting that parents are allowed to chime in, or is this, because I thought it was a subcommittee meeting that was going to discuss that, because I'm attending, so I don't want to interrupt now, I'm not supposed to. But.
This is the subcommittee.
No, this is the subcommittee.
Oh, okay. I thought it was on a separate side.
Oh, that, you know, we went nine minutes early.
Oh.
I apologize.
Okay.
So if you would like to get up and speak, then.
If I may, for a minute.
Please.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
My name's Andy Keen, and I had asked that this be put on the agenda. So thank you, Dr. Mulqueen, for doing that. I appreciate you taking any time to discuss it. I, you know, I personally don't know the answer either, but I do have a student who struggles with getting here on time and being awake for school. And I can tell you personally that I was in the same avenue of, you know, my parents told us to go to bed, we went to bed, we got up when they told us to get up. It doesn't quite work necessarily for every child. The studies have shown, and the professionals at Boston Children's Hospital tell me, that there is that two-hour possible shift when they go through puberty. My daughter was already a night owl that starved, so then she went through that shift. So now she has a real struggle getting to bed before 11 o'clock at night. And she's not even all the way in, she's just an eighth grader. So I was hoping that as a district, we could at least have an open discussion about it, think about what some of the possibilities might be to help those kids. Certainly, you know, I know there are ramifications for bus and costs and sports and all of that, but just purely from a health perspective, you know, we want our kids to have all opportunities that we can give them. And I think there truly is, for some kids, just an absolute impossibility to fall asleep any sooner than their body tells them to fall asleep. And I have gotten that from the experts, but yes, that is the case in my daughter's situation. I know there's got to be other kids out there in the same situation. So I would beg to differ a little bit with some of the statistics that I just quickly heard. I did print out some things, if anyone's interested in reading them, but, and I can email them to you as well, if you would prefer. So I love that the school in general, at the high school level, is very flexible with scheduling. Dr. Mulqueen had offered that up for my daughter this year as an eighth grader, so that is helping. She takes that study hall period first period, and that does make some difference as far as her workload, but she still can't get here. And honest to God, it's not about us being a late family, it's not about her being a difficult child, it's not about not liking school, she just can't get home. We've done the lights, we've done the schedule, we've done all those things. So there truly is a need for us as parents and as a school district to try to help in some way. The studies also have all written up that it is certainly not just the school's responsibility. And I understand that as a parent too, that I have that responsibility to help her as much as I can. So I'm not asking the school to, you know, be the bad guy for all of that. We all know.
And what I would like to offer to you is if you need additional assistance beyond, you know, we had a conversation, I think, last year.
Yes.
Through email. If you need additional assistance, you know, let me know or let Ken Kelly know. I'm happy to intercede on your behalf and try to think of some other things too, because we do try to provide lots of flexibility. We understand not every individual can conform, you know? And so we are always thinking out of the box about how we can help.
Yeah, and I think that that's a, I mean, they've been great at the middle school, absolutely great, and so do you, so I appreciate that. You know, when these kids go out into the workforce later on too, I don't think necessarily every job is going to be an eight-to-five job. It's already changing. I mean, look at places like Google and these other places.
Work from home.
They do extremely out-of-the-box situations when it comes to workload. So I don't think we can use that argument either to hold them to, you know, it always has been this.
And the great thing as adults is we get to choose what we want to do.
Sure.
And as kids, you don't get to choose, you have to kind of go along the way.
Yeah.
So if you need additional help, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
How is the flexibility working at the eighth grade this year for your daughter? I mean, has that really hit the mark for her?
Well, the situation is that that first period is the study hall. So, you know, if we're here right on time as opposed to getting here a little bit ahead, you know, maybe it's a little easier to get in the groove of school, but it doesn't make it any easier to get up. You know, it doesn't change that. It does help with the workload and some of the anxiety and make a lot of that.
So if parents come to administration, like you did, it sounds like there is that flexibility. But what about the parents who don't know there is that flexibility, and every morning is that battle to get their kid out of school, you know, up and out? And I have one who, I'm yelling at the last minute, quiet, let's go. That I think part of it is just, that's how they are.
That's how I always thought. And Dr. Mulqueen had sent out the invitation when New Report was discussing this possibility to go up to the seminar in spring that the doctor from St. Louis Hospital did.
Was that part of the wellness program?
No, that was outside.
What's that?
It was outside of our wellness program. It was a separate invitation that went out. It was a separate invitation that went out, I think it may have been in the summer, maybe? I can't remember.
Yeah, spring-ish, I think.
Yeah.
But it was a, just an email to all-
But it was to attend the Newbury Port.
If you wanted to. And that's where I went, because of the issues we had been having, and that's, you know, when the lights went off and said we should try to do something. So, you know, I think we should, as a district, also help educate parents that their, you know, responsibility doesn't exist.
Right.
If you have trouble. But you're right, I think there's a lot of parents who just suck it up and deal with it, and kind of tell their kids to do the same thing, which I did. Anyway, thank you for your-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So do I now make a motion to bring this to the full committee?
No.
No?
Okay.
So our next order of business is restricted use of streets?
Yes, this was another email we got from representative of the cross-country team, particularly in relation to distance runners being able to use farm lane, which, right now, due to police security reasons that we heard about from a group of parents that spoke to us several months ago, the team is not supposed to be using farm lanes, supposed to be using other roads. Is that an accurate depiction, Dr. Redding?
Yeah, so we had some students who would typically congregate in that area for a variety of reasons, transportation, and also for some cross-country reasons. And because of the concerns that came to us, I think, late last spring, we curtailed the use of that at least temporarily to ensure everybody's safety. And I think change is not always easy, and I, I think we've got to think through, or some students who are having difficulty with that decision, have to think through what other running patterns they can have, but it would be less than prudent for me to, to continue to turn a blind eye to a situation that may have some potential difficulty regarding student safety, and if something were to occur, then I think, you know, the responsibility would, would sit here, and I'm not comfortable with that just yet.
Now, is there any way that they can start there and go, you know, uphill and down and not have to go by this house right there?
Well, that's what I would invite them to do, is to think through, what are all the other possibilities, and to come up with something that might fit their need. But that's not for me to decide, that would be for the athletic director and for the students to decide with their coaches.
They should be able to figure that out.
I would say so.
I mean, is it our policy that we're not letting them go right there?
It's not a policy, it's just a procedure for right now to say for the, for the, for the, for the near future, we're going to curtail the use of that area.
Okay. But they could start over there and kind of-
I don't know where they could start, but they would have to figure that out with their coach and with the athletic director.
Okay.
And then just come, not come to us, but come to you.
They should go to the athletic director and their coach to figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think, is this because of the reconfiguration now on Main Street, which is kind of a nightmare?
No, this is more about-
No, like now that they're bringing it up, because I know that running on Main Street all of a sudden has become really difficult with the reconfiguration. I just drove through it.
Oh, oh.
There's no sidewalk all of a sudden, so it looks like-
There is a sidewalk, it's past the barriers on, so you have to cross, yeah, you have to cross.
It's a cross, and then you cross again, I think, so if they were running up-
This is about the security of the person living near Farm.
No, I know.
That's what this is all about.
But I'm wondering if it hasn't been an issue until right now, because they just changed the-
I think it was an issue before.
Okay.
And the complication that you're describing has come along too.
Too, okay.
It has more to do with the distance of the loop they do back here, and what the next best distance is out here, which I guess is much longer or something, so.
Okay.
So is-
Okay. That's homework for the A.D. and the cross-country coach.
Okay.
They should be able to handle that easily.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to adjourn the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Subcommittee meeting at 6:20.
Okay, we're right on schedule now.
So I don't have time to lie on the line, I'm done here.
So now I'd like to call to order the business meeting. And I will begin with, roll call, Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna Blancher.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Yeah, here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Andy Murphy, here. Lisa Connor.
Yeah.
Chris Redding.
Here.
Deanna Trotta.
Here.
4.6.
All right. Let's find the flag and do the pledge of allegiance.
(audience clapping) My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[1546.23][1546.23](audience clapping)
Okay, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, move on into it, so.
All in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, our first order of due business is the MSBA vote for additional school building committee funding.
Break in public without a name or explanation.
Okay. I'm now going to read to you what we're doing here. Proposed by Penticott, form a vote for regional school district school committee. Voted that the Penticott Regional School District hereby appropriates from its stabilization fund the amount of $350,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of a feasibility study to determine the best remedy to repair deficiencies, both educationally and structurally related to Penticott Regional High School, located at 24 Main Street, Western Ubarry, Massachusetts, including all costs incidental and related thereto, parentheses, the study, close parentheses, set amount to be expended under the direction of Penticott Regional School District High School Building Committee, period. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to transfer from the stabilization fund to the school building committee fund pursuant to the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority, period. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and with any costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved and by, and received, approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. The end.
I'll get back.
Thank you.
So you need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so originally it was, what, $750,000 set aside?
That was the first one, yes.
First one, okay, so this is in addition to that?
Right.
And it's coming out of the stabilization fund?
Right, we did, we did the same vote last week, and then the MSBA said, "Thanks for the vote, we appreciate it." So you can continue going on, because I know you're going to do it, but we like that little disclaimer stuff we like in our little vote, so if you could revote it, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
We'll revote it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, next, we've got need to go into executive session, we will not be returning. The executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, such as tenants' contracts. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Yeah, here. Joanna.
Yes.
Bill.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
Lisa.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Deanna.
Here.
Emily.
Yes.
It's like you can see it, don't you?